We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do please call roll.
Yes, Chairman Garrison?
President.
Vice Chair Brown?
Here.
Supervisor Simmons?
Here.
Supervisor Thurman?
Here.
Supervisor Mallory? Here. You have a call.
Great, thank you very much. Today we have Pastor David Larson with the C3 Community, Cuthbert Community Church. Could you please come forward and lead us in the pledge and the invitation, sir?
I'm going to ask you to stand with me and say the pledge together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You can be seated. Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this great country that we live in. Thank you for the liberties and freedoms we enjoy. Thank you for this land of plenty. Thank you for the rain today and the blessings that you shower upon us every day. Lord, I pray for wisdom, guidance, and direction for the supervisors today. Thank you, Lord, for each one that has come out, Lord, and I just pray that justice, fairness will prevail. Lord, that you will grant your wisdom in all decisions, especially those that are most difficult. We thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Pastor Larson. We'll start with Supervisor Thurman. Do you have anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, we had a very interesting town hall last weekend over in Beaver Creek at their school. And I was really happy to be part of that, looking at growth in the Verde Valley and what's happening. I'm afraid we're getting discovered. During the recession, we did everything we could to get business and people to come here and to create jobs. It was very difficult. And now it's reversed itself and it's become very popular to not only visit here but live here. And so there is only a certain amount of private property left, and we have to look at that wisely on how we're going to allow development on that. There is private property rights, and I am a constitutionalist, so I'm going to always lean on the property owner for whatever rights he has. Within, you know, over-the-top density is just a little too much lately, and so we're looking at trying to maybe squelch some of that. But on the flip side, there are still a lot of private property available in the Verde Valley that can infill. And like it or not, we're all here, and we can't close the gate. That's not fair. It's against the Constitution of the State of Arizona and the United States. Also, we have a Proposition 207, which actually is a state statute that we have that's going to have to be looked at very carefully when we okay things, because if we don't okay it, there's a chance that they are allowed to come back and sue the county because we did not okay the best use of that property. And that was passed a few years ago. So it's very interesting. Also, we have a water meeting for the Smithsonian Institute is opening up this month in Black Canyon City. It's the same one that was in Camp Hurry for the last few months. We're happy to do that, and they had a big event down there for that at their school. And so it's been an interesting week. I am also at ACO this week, Arizona Association of Counties, looking at legislation that could mirror or join with ours at the Yavapai County, as your Yavapai County Legislative Liaison or lobbyist, if you will, for the legislature. I'm having to keep up on what's going on. So I've been in Phoenix on and off for the last two months, every week, and it's been an interesting ride. If you really want to build a pass, and I know everybody calls watching a bill pass as like watching sausage being made, but if you want to build a pass, there are certain committees that you need to be very cognizant of and be part of to get that bill to pass or one not to pass. And so we're looking at a lot of those. Anyway, that's good enough.
Just so everybody knows, we are going to do everything we can today to make sure that everybody that wants to speak will have the opportunity to do so. One thing I can tell you about this process is we strive in all manner to be open and transparent in everything that we do. And as you'll see, as we go through this hearing, this item has been through multitudes of committees and commissions and ultimately is here on our desk. So we have done everything we can possible to make sure everybody is aware of the correct information. There's a lot of misinformation that's being put out, even some as early as this morning, stating that somehow we're trying to suppress public speaking. We absolutely positively are not trying to do that in any manner whatsoever. So in that, we will be, when we get to call to the public, I will be notifying the person that is up to speak as well as the next two on the list, so that you, if you're upstairs, you'll have plenty of time to come down, get in line, and come to the podium and speak. If you're here in the room, you'll have the ability to get up, go to the back, and prepare to come up as well. When you do come up, please state your name and where you live. I don't necessarily need your physical address, but if you're from a locality, that will be good enough. So we have to have that for the public record. So with that, we'll go ahead and turn this item over. We are discussing a plan zone request map change. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Williams and Ms. Brock. I'm having a hard time with that. I just continue to want to call you Genovese.
I know.
We all are.
So you'll have to forgive me if somehow that slips out of my mouth, but thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you and good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Leah Brock, formerly Leah Genovese. I am the same person, planner with Yavapai County Development Services. Today I am presenting the application for a zoning map change for the Patel property. This is application number H18052. The applicant's property is located in District 3 in the Village of Oak Creek. You can see here, this is the area view of Village of Oak Creek. Property is zoned RCU 2A. It's 4.65 acres. RCU 2A is residential rural with a two-acre minimum. You can see that there are only a couple of properties that maintain that RCU 2A designation in this area. Some detailed zoning here. This property is the RCU 2A. We have C2-1 to the north, planned urban development with condos here to the west, planned area development with retail and commercial here to the south, residential PAD with a hotel to the south, and more residential neighbors here, multifamily here. It's a close-up of those zoning districts. Here's an aerial view of the property. The applicant is requesting the consideration of a zoning map change to rezone the entire parcel from RCU 2A to C2-1. This property is currently zoned RCU 2A, which would allow as a matter of right one single-family residence per parcel as well as related accessory uses and structures. Adjacent uses. There is developed commercial shopping center to the north and another to the southeast. There is developed residential townhouse condo community to the west across State Route 179. Los Piedras, a residential community and a hotel, are the adjacent property to the south. There are developed single-family residential properties to the east. To the southeast, ordered on three sides by the applicant's property, is an electrical substation that was approved through a use permit in 1981. Here I have some aerial photos, and Mr. Williams is going to come up and present those.
Thank you very much. So the aerial photos that we have here, here is our subject property today, kind of an L shape around the APS transformer. We do have, as Leah already mentioned, we have the Sedona Vista Outlet Mall right here. This is the new Element Hotel under construction. We do have on the northwest corner, another commercial site, it's the grocery store, bank, several other small businesses. And then over here in this direction, we have the Oak Creek Estados condominium complex. If we go forward just a different angle, shows the residential here to the east. We have an apartment complex right back in this area behind the outlet mall. This is taken from over the view of the Oak Creek Estados. Looking to the southeast now, you can see again the outlet mall. This is the commercial corner, Oak Creek Estados, and then the neighboring residential. Down here, we do have the Los Piedras site as well. This property, and this is not an accurate depiction, but the property does come about halfway to three-quarters of the way up the hill down in this area. Looking to the southwest, again, similar view. In the background here, I want to point out that we have the other hotel, condo, townhome complex back in here. Down in here is the Collective, which I believe is now for sale, but that's another full commercial property down in that area. And then looking due south from the north, we have this hotel here. This is the new mini-storage that's being built. This is allowed by right on this particular property. We have the Element Hotel right here, the outlet mall, and then in this location right here, we have the Patel property. And then working the way down the road, the other additional commercial properties, Oak Creek Estados, and then Los Piedras in the distance here. And then this is just looking at the community as a whole from a distance. This is the Patel site, and it's really one of the, I believe, one of the few, if not the last remaining parcel to be developed in the community along this 179 corridor. Just a different angle, this is looking due west. This is looking due east. Again, here is our subject property right here. And then the citizen participation map. I'm going to go ahead and actually address this just a little bit for Leah here. The citizen participation map, this notification ring that we have here, this is a 300-foot notification ring. The notification requirements for this project are 1,000 feet. This ring is depicted on this map because this project has triggered a supermajority vote per ARS 11814, which says that if 20% of the ownership in that 300 feet and 20% of the represented land area within that 20 feet, it shall trigger a supermajority vote, a three-quarters vote, which in this case is four of five affirmative votes if a motion to approve should be made. So we just want to clarify that. We don't usually run into this on our zoning cases, but in this case, it was done. We have had several criticisms, I want to point out, from the Los Piedras, that they were not notified, that, you know, they were not included in this. They were included as part of the 300-foot ring. And then the ownership, because this parcel right here is a commonly owned parcel, the percentage of units down in this area were apportioned into the square footage up here. So the argument that they were not notified, you know, is irrelevant, but is erroneous. They absolutely were counted in this 300-foot protest ring under an apportion value for common area based on their CCNRs and based on the state law requirements, so.
That was against opposition.
Yes, and that was opposition. We have, as I said, we have received, you know, enough to trigger the supermajority. With that, I'll hand it off to Leah.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dave. In summary, this application is for a zoning map change to rezone this parcel from RCU 2A to C2-1. Staff has worked with the applicant to provide the following stipulations and to address community concerns. I know there is a lot of discussion regarding the potential use of the property, but I do want to reiterate to everyone that this application is for a zoning map change. When and if an application for a use is submitted to Development Services, issues regarding that use will be addressed at that time. Following stipulations were drafted by the applicant and staff to address the concerns. They are on the overhead for your consideration. This does conclude my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the application. The applicant is also here and available for questions.
Before you start, could I get one of you two, possibly Mr. Williams, to explain to everybody, board included, exactly what our C3 community is, and how it came to be, and what it means?
Absolutely. RCU 2A is essentially the county's holding district. In 1968, state legislature said the counties shall have a zoning ordinance, shall address land use, and shall do enforcement of said ordinance. At that point, it took until, I believe, 1972 or '73 for the Village of Oak Creek to come in as part of all of our communities countywide and do detailed zoning. What they did at the time is they basically approached the communities of what should these land uses be? And in the event an owner, this was 50 years ago now, in the event an owner did not step up and say, "I'd like to be part of this process," their land was put and assigned as an RCU 2A zone. So in this case, you can see where we've got the RCU 2A. We still have, you know, just a couple holdout parcels here that are RCU 2A. This particular application is them coming in and asking for that zoning to be changed. Now, in the 1980s, the county said that RCU 2A may be too big. So they came back in and they said, "Let's make it all an 18 density, RCU 18, to go to smaller lots." And they then reversed that decision in the early 90s and said, "No, no, 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 we need to go back to bigger," mainly due to wastewater requirements on dividing lands. It's the wastewater and the ability to get wells in on those large lots. In this case, obviously wastewater is served by Big Park as its water services, but it was really created as a holding zone until a development plan can be brought forward or an owner wished to rezone the property into an appropriate classification.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Williams and Ms. Brock?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Supervisor Mallory?
Fifty years ago on this, is the people, the people that own the land today, were they the ones going way back here?
Not in, my mic was on, not in 1973 when this was done. I believe, and the applicants can speak to this, but I believe they had owned this land for 25 years now.
Okay.
And they can give specific numbers to you.
Thank you.
So Supervisor Thurman? Mr. Chair, this is not a specific zoning for this hotel that is possibly going to be built on here. This could have other things on it, correct?
That's correct. Their desire is to have a hotel. Their request, however, is for a zoning case, to change it to C2 zoning, and we back up the other way, with specific stipulations added in to protect the views of the mountains. So anything that would be built here would have to be shifted back, would have to meet the height limitations that they are imposing on this case that were worked through with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So going through and doing that, it is a C2 zoning case. We're not talking specifically about a hotel here, although that is their desire to build.
So could it be, I don't want to pick out one, but could it be a supermarket like Fries or Safeway?
Yes. As a matter of fact, the only uses, and let's jump back to the stiffs here, we do need to update the stiffs here, because I see we've got some stiffs that didn't carry through from the Planning Commission on this slide. They are in your records. But they did stipulate that C2 uses such as the general repair of automobiles, I better read that better than my own notes, general repair of automobiles, light trucks, shall not be allowed, no sales of new or used light trucks or RVs, and no self-storage facilities. So they have put some stipulations on in response to the community's desire to not take out these specific uses, but a supermarket would be appropriate under the C2 district as would a restaurant or other C2 uses.
Well, I'm just looking, you look at, here in Verde, you look at batches of fries. The amount of traffic generated by those is insane.
Yes.
And so this is what my concern was, that it could be one of those if they didn't build a hotel.
Absolutely.
It would be a lot lower, it'd only be, you know, a story and a half, but.
Potentially.
Yeah, but it would be a tough one.
Okay. Great. Any other questions, Ms. Brock?
No, we were just discussing the stipulations. What you have in your packet, what you have in your packet and on the agenda item crosses out item number five, and it does stipulate, we have additional stipulations that do stipulate to the height, the maximum height, and I'll be happy to read those in if needed.
Yeah, could you clarify that just for everybody, because I'm seeing them.
Yes, staff will go ahead and update that. So item number five was struck from the stipulations. Item number six says a building permit. Application shall be made within five years, is what the Planning and Zoning Commission. We added item number 10 and 11 to the list. Item number 10 says that if it's built as a hotel, the maximum height shall be 34 feet measured from the natural grade, including the parapets, maximum height for the elevator and stairwells, and shade structure shall be 44 feet as measured from the natural grade. If built as a non-hotel use, the maximum building height shall be 30 feet as measured from the natural grade. And this, the additional height allows for those parapets, it allows for a little architectural embellishment, and more importantly, the elevator towers that's needed to service a building such as this.
All right.
And we will get those changed and updated during this meeting.
Great. Any other questions for?
I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is a rezoning, and then they still have to come forward with a permit, is that correct? Is that what you said?
They will have to go through the building permit process as well as getting final ADOT approval.
That was my next question, is where does ADOT and traffic and all that come into?
ADOT has already made some initial comments on this. We have the site plan here. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we don't have the site plan. ADOT has already made some comments on this, and that is that a right-hand deceleration lane shall be required as part of this. That is an ADOT-specific item. Our stipulations do include the general caveat that they must comply with all applicable codes and ordinances, state and federal, so that they will have to meet whatever ADOT requires.
Is your, I'm sorry, Stefani, is your expectation that would be an entrance only, not an exit? Or do you expect it to be an entrance-exit?
No, I would anticipate this as a right-in only.
Right-in only, exit through Jack Skanning Road?
Yes, that would be my anticipation. Now, with that said, let me back up. So it would be a right-in and a right-out only because of the traffic flow here. There is going to be an exit up here under the proposed site plan that they're working with right now, but it would not be a left-out. In other words, I don't believe there would be any median break here. Yeah, they're shaking their heads, no. There would be no median break on 179, but right-in, right-out, come up to the traffic circle and leave, just like many businesses.
No left-out, no left-in?
That's correct.
Okay. That answers that question for me. Any, yes, ma'am?
No, I'm fine. So basically what they're going to need to comply with is what the other businesses have to comply with also as they deal with ADOT.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Williams and Ms. Brock? I've seen none. Let's move on to the applicant, please.
And as, I just did want to point out, as Supervisor Simmons already mentioned, we do have Mr. Stewart and Mo Ma here, and I believe they may like to speak at some point through.
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, ma'am.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jennifer Bobbly. I'm here as applicant's representative from Sander Associates, a firm down in Tempe, Arizona. So we've been working with the applicant on their project for quite a time. It's been a long road to get here to you. Started before anything was ever formally submitted to the county, pre-op meetings following that, lots of trips back to the drawing board, and lots of community meetings to get us to this point. Okay, so I think a lot of my early slides are going to be, pardon my technical confusion right now. So a lot of my earlier slides have been already covered, so I'm going to try to zip by them fast for you. This is just the site. Wanted to just briefly give an introduction to Jack and Shondre's hotel. They have owned the property for roughly 26 years now. They did buy it back in about 1991. They are hotel owners and operators, so they have had other hotels up in northern Arizona, currently operating one in Williams. They've been great property owners for this property, just maintaining it, although it is vacant. They've made sure that it's always clear of weeds, debris, and have offered it up for different community needs throughout the years, if there was parking or construction staging for their neighbors in the area. They are engaged corporate citizens, so when they do have an established business in the community, they're involved. They're not an owner that just steps back and stays away. They're visiting the properties, splitting their time between their home and their different properties. So as a citizen and an owner, business owner here, they will be very engaged and involved in the community and in their business. They will have a face to put to the business if there were complaints or issues or concerns. We've been working with a great development team to bring this project to you today. We've come from firms with landscape knowledge of northern Arizona with Norris Design, Design Self, Logo, isn't showing up very well, but they're a great hotel architecture firm. They do a lot of prototype designs and formatting for hotels. And then we've got Shepherd Wissinger Inc. as the civil on board, very familiar with all of this area, and they've done a lot of work with ADOT on different projects, too. So it's a great team behind the Patel's to bring the project to this site. And again, I'll show you the site plan briefly. Tough to talk about rezoning. We're not technically talking about the use because so many of the requirements, we've got to have some sort of plan and drawings to show and bring to the community. At the heart of this is the rezoning request, but what we've done is create a site plan that really tried to respect the nature and the context, pushing setbacks so that we're off of 179 to protect those views, respecting a lot of sites' difficult design constraints, which we'll touch on later, and just, you know, responding to the very unusual shape of the site. And we talked earlier that it was an L shape. I kind of think a bit more like a weird L with a trunk because we do have that little parcel that sort of wraps around as it comes down there. And this has all kind of been covered with wash and easements. So originally, we did have some waivers included with our request through our community outreach and citizen participation. We took those away, went back to the drawing board, fixed the site plan, and brought it down and make sure that it was in compliance with all of the C2 standards for the zoning district that we were requesting. That took a lot of work internally with the design team to fix the overall design, but what we're left with is that we found a way to make something fit under the zoning without needing any waivers. It did ultimately result in some losses of area for the business. I think we had touched on the zoning in the area really well, but our request is just matching what is happening around that commercial corridor. And I did just want to point out the elevation, I think the images from the county, which are better than my camera, and Google can provide, touch on this, but this is just the topo map. We're at about 40/40 elevation down here at that flat part of our site that you saw. And as we go up this hill, the top point of our site is at 40/79. There's a pretty good shift in the site elevation there, and then the site, the Los Piedras open space continues elevating beyond that to about 4100. And so these are just some of the views that you can see, how that site elevation changes there, and you can see we're wrapping around that utility station. I think this is a nice view to show you how that elevation changed, really blocked the whole view of the site as you're approaching on 179. And this picture is taken right at the Collective's main entrance. Then you come up, this is about our property line. And again, just another view. So how did they come to this irregular site? And we have touched on the history of this area, you know, blanket zoning across the entire, so this holding zone just going across the entire county in 1968. And that's right around the same time that the developers of the entire Big Park area were taking these areas out and forming the subdivision. So the subdivision that this particular property is part of was actually subdivided in 1969. So the subdivision that this particular property is part of was actually subdivided in 1969, so roughly a year after the zoning went into place. And they left this tract here, tract B, which the site is part of, for business purposes, utilities and sewage disposal or waste treatment. So it was kind of left out there to become something different later, understanding what the community was going to need in terms of electrical and different utility services. Ultimately, the substation goes in. First, we see in '74, this little portion goes over to Big Park for the sewage treatment facility. That's no longer there, but Big Park Improvement District still owns that property. Then in 1981, in line with that use permit for the electrical substation, APS took this portion of the property right here. In about '99, they determined they took more than they needed, and this property was then sold to a different private owner and then another subsequent transfer between private owners in 2003. So what we're left with today is this irregularly shaped or fragmented tract B that has about 4.73 acres left for our development site, half acre of private landlocked development here, about a half acre of this sewage treatment, and about a one acre electrical substation, and then easements to provide access to those other parcels that we don't own. And what this does is create a number of development constraints for this property. You lose a significant portion of your site area to easements and the wash. And then because you have this irregular shape, you've got lots of extra setback areas than a typical lot would have, so you have a big loss of actual developable area for your site. And ultimately, what we're left with is incompatible zoning for the area that matches a holding zone that was established in the 60s just to get in line with the state drafting the enabling legislation and the county adopting its original zoning. So I was passed by those. So the main question for rezoning in Arizona is, does the request comply with the, in the county, the comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan for this area here has us designated as a municipal growth area. So for a municipal growth area, you're looking at uses in areas that are developed already. They've got pockets of areas that might need, still developing, but the infrastructure and services are already there, and there's already a mix of residential and non-residential uses. So development in this area can include anything among residential, non-residential uses. And you see that in line with the development pattern that exists today and the zoning pattern that exists today for this area. And this just goes along with that history of how we got here. This aerial from the 80s shows the Big Park area, the site right here. And in its early formation, you jump about 17 years, and you're seeing it start to fill in. So it's just been growing, and over the years, it's filled into what we see today, which is this, and we have this parcel left, one of the only ones left with that RCU zoning. And so we've got to put it to the next use to make sure that it can develop just as all the other properties in the area have. And again, this was just touching on showing that site plan a little more context, the extra setbacks that were provided primarily along 179 to really preserve that viewpoint or going into this project, meaning that was going to be important and as part of the stipulations for the site development. We really wanted to make sure that that was maintained no matter what happens on here because any commercial building is going to have, you know, a roughly higher building elevation than a typical residential. So the important thing was protecting that viewpoint there, trying to buffer the APS substation. We do have to maintain access points here because we have easements, so we can't block that off. And then we do have the right-in, right-out here with a decel, a decel lane has been added for our early discussions with ADOT. And it's somewhat difficult with this project because to get the ball rolling, we have to reach out and work with ADOT and give them preliminary studies, and then so much time passes. So we've been working in the process right now of updating every study and information for ADOT, but they also can't take it from us until we're actually ready for building permits. So it's kind of a chicken and egg sort of thing. We have some preliminary studies done with them, did the changes based on the results of that, and then we're waiting until we actually can move forward with development to take them the latest and greatest plans and studies. But the recommendations based on early numbers and updated was the decel lane. And this is just more views of that commercial development as you're coming into the community. So when you, when you start at the roundabout, so I'm here at the State Route 179 and Ridge Hill, that about maybe a day, two interchange, that first roundabout is where you start to see commercial development happening at the corner. You've got a hotel here, you've got the collective with the Sedona Spa behind that. And then at the next corner, which is our corner, we've got the Sedona Village, commercial over here, and then we've got multifamily condos. So an each sample adding two-story development, commercial and multifamily, so nothing developing under an RCU district. And then again, at the next roundabout, more commercial development. So what we have before you today is just as simple, really, when you take all of the emotion out of it and the work that we've been doing over the years, you're left with this basic, very simple rezoning request to take a parcel that hasn't been able to develop under its current zoning because it's just not compatible for the site and its surroundings, and we need to change it to something that is. So this zoning district that's on there right now wasn't intended to remain on properties long-term in these developed areas. So compatible with nearly all the other property in the village, which has been rezoned to some other district, whether it's a PUD, a PAD, or a single-family residential, everything's had the benefit of re-zoning from that RCU to something else to create the village as it exists today. It wouldn't exist today if all the other properties were held to the same standard that would be applied to this property if it were to remain under this RCU district. And again, considering the site as it is, its size allows, if we were able to subdivide it under current zoning, it would actually accommodate two homes because of the acreage. But when we go back to the issues with the irregular size and other constraints, you actually can't create two parcels out of this property to have two single-family homes on it, which would be allowed for any other 4.75 acre RCU zoning property. So you can't develop it to its maximum ability under the existing zoning. And even if you tried to take it to an R110 that matches the other subdivisions in this area, the amount of size for this site would allow roughly 20 homes. And then you can't take a 20-home subdivision and fit it into a site that has easement constraints and multiple setbacks like we do, it just, it wouldn't fit and it wouldn't lay out. So again, this development opportunities for the site are very limited. We've gone through a very lengthy citizen participation process, as I said. We, we held our original neighborhood meetings. We went back to the drawing board. We had lots of meetings back and forth with Big Park representatives, trying to come up with some concessions to make the project a better fit for the community. And so a roughly two-year process of that brought us to where we were today, where we found a design for us that worked for our project and still allowed a reasonable development and use of the site, but also addressed a lot of the concerns from the community with the initial project as presented. We've sent out all the notification letters, we've sent out multiple notification letters. We participated in the Big Park meetings as well as our own. Ultimately, like you said, if you want to get into the details of the use, which we're just looking at rezoning, but with respect to what the community needs and what they need to speak from us regarding our proposed use, if we're able to move forward, lowering building height, revising the site plans that we met all of the setback requirements, reducing our building area and losing rooms and amenities space, and then coming up with that list of stipulations, which we worked very hard with Big Park, Big Park's representatives to come up with that stipulation list. And then at this point, the site, as we have it developed, actually needs it. It needs a good majority of the existing RCU standards for setbacks and building height and lot coverage and things like that. So, and the primary one again, along 179, our setback as a side road is actually only a much smaller setback required on 179 because of the corner lot. That's technically our side setback. So we really increased that. The only spot where it's been approaching a little bit is where our, not even approaching, but just coming closer to the actual required setback is where our site is constrained because of the smaller width. And that would be in this area right here. So earlier, we had, this is the original plan, so we pushed it around. This is the original plan. This new one, we pushed it up, eliminated setback variances that were here and here. But again, working around this portion right here was very difficult to fit a building. And again, just our original request, we had a three-story, we dropped that down to meet the current standards. And this exhibit, I really like just as an example because we've got the top of the hill right here, this red line. So as you can see, our site bumps up and we build into it slightly, but it continues up so that everything that we build falls under that top elevation of the hill that continues on beyond our site. Again, we talked briefly about traffic numbers in your question earlier today, Supervisor. We looked at that because a lot of the feedback that we got were suggestions for other uses we might do on the property. And so we did some analysis based on the trip generation numbers. And we saw that a hotel was one of the lower trip generators. The daily trips are about 1261 for the proposed number of rooms versus a grocery store at about 4,000. A multifamily complex similar to One Cross the Street, when, and that was more comparable to the hotel use of about 1,121. And again, some recommended that we put a gas station there, and that's going to be a little more of a trip generator. And again, throughout the participation process, we heard about lots of different uses that might be put to this property. And number one thing is that most of these uses still require rezoning, no matter what you want to do for the property, other than maybe putting a multimillion-dollar home on the property or one single-family home. But again, most of these, a hospital, a grocery store, pharmacy, big box retail, that's all going to require the commercial zoning that we're requesting. And no need for additional hotels with another comment that we heard. There's no ignoring the fact that this community has an economy that's driven by tourism. And recent reports from the Arizona Tourism Department show that for Yowapai County, your tax revenue dollars that are tourism-driven, you've got about 46.4 million from 2018. So it's a big economic driver for the community, provides jobs, tax dollars, and services. So there is continuing growth too in this industry. So we need to be sure that we're continuing to accommodate the tourism industry with new and updated alternate options for housing, and also to take away the strain of the short-term rentals that have approached into the single-family residential communities and have had an impact on the rental rates. And then one concern that we've heard throughout this process is that this is going to set a precedent for future rezoning. And in this case, we've got a property that hasn't even technically been rezoned yet, been holding on to this RCU zoning for the better part of 40 years, and we need to bring it up to speed with everything else that's around it. We're not looking at a property that has been before you once for rezoning to one district, and it's now before you again for a request to change from that district to this one we're coming to for the first time as a property owner saying, we still have this holding district, and we need to do something different with this property. We've got lots of unique characteristics about this site that would set it apart from others. It's one of the only, not the only in this area, undeveloped parcel at a primary intersection. It's along a major transportation corridor. It is buffered from its adjacent residential with a wash. It's buffered from the adjacent residential to the south with a hill. The residential community to the south of it is two-story attached townhome product. And it matches on the zoning the other corners that it is adjacent to. And again, it's a property that's never been developed. Also, very unusual shape that just makes it difficult to do much else with this property other than commercial development out of corner. And finally, those kind of carvings that we talked about earlier, where we see different portions of the property being taken away and dedicated over to provide public utility services to make this community grow and give this community the utility that it needed at the time and continues to need to be a viable community.
Can I ask you a question in regards to that?
Yes.
I'm going to hold it till the end to center on that. Is there any plan for APS to extend overhead lines and/or to expand the existing equipment that they have?
My understanding and discussions with APS is not that there's been any discussions to expand their facility, but I know that part of their project that they have right now is to update the lines that are connecting the substation and I'm going to run and not remember the name of the other substation.
There are no overhead lines currently though, right?
No, there are. The overhead lines that connect the one substation with the other. So they're going to upgrade those to make some of the double, it's a lot of technical APS jargon that...
APS is actually in the process of upgrading their overhead lines, their high-tension lines from this location, Malloy and Guar. So they're, they're, they're to the south. So they'll tie in at this location. I don't expect that they don't have the room to enlarge this location other than a little bit of manipulation on-site. They're pretty well locked in.
Yeah, they are developed pretty well out to the parcel that they have. There's a little bit of room, but they need that for access for their trucks to get and service the site. So there's no plan to expand that substation, but like you said, there's improvement for their line. There are no overhead lines for our site, but there is, I think, about three that go up the hill as part of that connection of the substation.
Thank you.
I don't think that's correct. There's two, they're adding another feeder line in, I've already stopped. And that's, that project is ongoing? They haven't made a final decision.
Great, thank you, sir.
And then, as stated earlier, there's just been a lot of misinformation. It's kind of been a big misinformation campaign around this project. But we strip that all away. What we're really looking at is just rezoning. So there's been information sent out about an incorrect number of hotel rooms, an exaggerated hotel height, the idea that you can't enforce any stipulations that we've raised here that you, as a Board of Supervisors, would approve with a rezoning ordinance that you adopt, and that we're ignoring traffic and safety concerns, or that the All-American status of 179 is at risk. And not when we really went to great lengths to work to make sure that we were complying with making sure that those scenic views were maintained. And the All-American Byway status itself is used for, you know, interesting locales to kind of generate tourism. So that we're kind of right in line with the whole goals of the All-American Byway. And then just one final note too. There's been a lot of talk back throughout this process just on the CCNRs. And to point out that the CCNRs for this project are not the county's jurisdiction to enforce the private contracts, but this parcel was set aside in those CCNRs for business purposes in addition to the utility purposes. So a C2 zoning would be in compliance with the CCNRs. I'll leave it at that and answer any questions.
Very much. Yes, Supervisor, Mr. Chair, thank you. I, a couple of things, you saw that you have a five-year window to pull the permit. Is that within the realms of your clients?
We would love to pull a permit as soon as possible. It's all going to be just getting through the county's process and getting the design approvals through the communities. So I think five years is within the realm of possibilities. With respect to zoning enforcement of that stipulation, if for some reason five years wouldn't be enough, that would bring us back to you. And at that time, you as a board could consider an extension of that or at that point, discuss whether the property should be reverted back to its zoning. So it wouldn't be an automatic process, and I think a five-year window is sufficient for us.
If it passes. Higher districts, have you showed this rendering yet, this new rendering to the higher district?
We have updated... We have updated the fire department with all of the fire district, sorry, with all of the updated plans, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yes ma'am, supervisor Mallory.
Just going back real quick on the APS. Are you basically, is that all set with them or do you have to go back and talk to them about anything or are you guys...
We'll continue to work with APS as both of us are going through a process right now. So us as adjacent owners are, because there's already existing overhead lines and the information we've again, we've got the layout of those lines stay the same, the line, the size of the line stays the same, it just adds extra arms. So we're fine with the project that they're doing and will work with them as neighbors throughout our process and hope that they work with us for ours.
Okay, you have that comment.
We have, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Could I get you to go back to, let me say this, back about 14 slides to the slide that talked about the public process you went through?
I'm sorry.
So that's kind of where I want to go next. There we go.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so I want to go through the hearing today as close to the method this project or this proposal, this applicant went through their process so that the public has a little better understanding, I guess, of exactly how we came to the point we are at today and the different points of community involvement we've had with this. As I stated earlier, we strive to be very open and transparent in everything we do. And I believe the process that has been followed has been more than normal for access and opportunity of the public to speak and represent their views and their opinions on an application. So as all things happen, the applicant came forward to our Community Development Department with a request for a project which required a zone change or a PAD to be put in place. The next step was to go out and do community meetings, which happened. The next step in the village is a kind of a special place. We have an entity in the village of Oak Creek that is just shy of a council, of an elective council elected through public process called the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council. They are a group of 29 H2As and other interests that get together on a monthly basis and discuss what they want to do and don't want to do in their community. And they are represented by each of those H2As appropriately. So this process was brought to them as a request by the board to make sure that the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council had their chance and their opportunity to participate in this action as it moved forward. Because as we saw with the mini-stores that's being built currently next to the Outlets, next to the Element, and the Element itself, regardless of what's being spread around the public, this board did not approve those applications. Those applications and those permits were put through as a matter of right. One thing to keep in mind is all the other properties up and down that corridor have that same right. And I can tell you that there are negotiations in process with people looking to come in and modify the current uses on some of those parcels to something more conducive or more applicable to that property as time moves forward. So this, as was stated by the applicant, is one of the last properties in the village that actually will have to come before this board and before the planning and zoning commissions on how its use changes. The rest of them are already set and were set for the most part back in the 70s. So the very next thing that happened is the applicant came in, approached the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council, explained to them that what they were wanting to do. The Big Park Regional Coordinating Council then asked them to meet and present to their planning and zoning committee. They have their own committee, at which time they did. The applicant, as well as the Community Development Department of the FI County, participated heavily in those meetings. And we moved forward with the process. And all this happened outside of anything coming to the county at this point. So I was expecting that the next person that would get up and speak would be a representative of the Big Park Planning and Zoning Committee, but I was told at the beginning of the meeting that they are not allowed to publicly speak for that committee outside of the board of the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council. So therefore, I will explain to you what happened in that process. The process went to that board. The board met regularly and often. The applicant came in, presented what they wanted to build, their request for stipulations on setbacks and heights. That committee went back and forth with both participation on saying, we don't want this, can you move it there? The applicant, I think, was very diligent in trying to listen to the public, listen to their concerns, and made modifications regularly to their plans to try to satisfy those concerns and those wishes. It got to a point where it did not look like there was any way to get through that board with anything resembling what the applicant wanted, at which point the applicant came back and said, we would wish to put this process or this plan forward without any stipulations attached to this property whatsoever. Just go for a straight C2 zone. And we said, we would prefer if you didn't do that. And would you please come back, work with that committee one more time, and see if we can come to some conditions and some terms that would meet everybody's approval. The applicant did, the planning and zoning committee did as well. They met many more times after that, came out with a list of stipulations that were then approved at a six-zero vote by that planning and zoning committee. They have nine members, three abstained from the vote.
Wrong, wrong, wrong facts.
It was approved by that committee. Then it was taken from that committee to the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council. And so as such, we do have the ability for the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council to have a representative come forward and speak to their meeting and their process and explain what they then presented to our own planning and zoning commission. So thank you very much for being up here. I'm going to ask Camille Cox to come up, please, and represent the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Ms. Cox, I'm going to pause you for one second. We've had at least two chairs open up down here. If anybody upstairs would like to come down and be in the room instead of having to try and negotiate getting down here when you're going to have to get in line, feel free to come on down and take up the little empty seats that have opened up. Ms. Cox, good morning.
Good morning to all of you. First of all, let me just explain, I'm the secretary actually and board member of the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council. Randy's summary was not really what we experienced exactly as part of the Big Park Council and the community. So I just want to point out a few areas that were a little bit different. And coming from California, I found the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council concept itself to be kind of an odd duck. And it is a little hard to understand and wrap your head around. Yes, we do have 29 members from the community. Some of them are homeowners associations and a few of them are business groups. Free business groups to be exact, and most are homeowners associations. And these homeowners associations send a representative, which is part of, actually, a board of directors. And different items come up related to our community that we make decisions about with respect to planning and zoning order, but I believe that if the county calls an agent, meaning that when things come up in our area, they're sent to the Big Park Council, we take a look at it, and we have a chance to weigh in so that the county has a sense of how these projects will affect us as a community. So that's really our function. It gets a little bit more complicated when we have our own planning and zoning committee. That committee's job is to basically go through and vet what these projects are and understand. And needless to say, for everybody out there, it's not so simple to maybe read through an application and understand what all the language means and what the implications might be. So these votes, this committee goes through that, they do the homework, they roll up their sleeves. When appropriate, they'll have a conversation with the applicant, doesn't always happen that way. But they come back to our once-a-month meeting and with a recommendation. And that recommendation's intention is not to be a ruling, of course, and we as a council aren't really making a ruling per se. But they do their best to give us their best view of it, and then the council takes a vote on it. This particular case was very emotional for our community as, I don't need to emphasize, you know that. The first application that came in, the planning and zoning committee voted unanimously against it. And the grounds that they gave had to do with not really meeting the public participation process. It, I'm going by memory here, I didn't bring it with me. It had to do with it being in conflict with the CCNRs. And the original application had asked for some waivers to push the easement, reduce the easement back against the back part of the property. That's my recollection. Anyway, there were three things, I believe, maybe there were four. Those were the grounds that that committee said no, came to the Big Park Council at a regular meeting. It was unanimously declined. So that was the first thing that happened in February. Few months later, the applicant came back with this C2-1.
Ask which year.
Beg your pardon?
Better memory. What year?
This year.
This year.
This year. So that was this February that the first decision came down. And I believe it was April, if I'm correct, when the second, is that correct, Jennifer? April?
The formal amended application was April?
Yes, in April, they came back with an amended application for a straight C2-1 zoning change. That was a little awkward for us as a community because it wasn't attached to a plan, made the homework a little bit more difficult, made the communication with the community more difficult. So we scrambled around and our committee went back to work, rolled up their sleeves. There were quite a lot of committee meetings. Randy was absolutely dead on. We had a lot of committee meetings. They were open to the public. There was a lot of witnesses, and I use the word witness because those committee meetings don't involve public participation. They only involve a gallery being open to the public so they can watch these meetings. Randy himself came to a couple of them. They were well attended by and large. And the committee really wrestled with this. It wasn't a situation where we were a collaboration and a lot of information exchange. It's kind of a stalemate situation. As we got closer to the deadline, a couple of members of the committee met privately with the applicant and they did hash out a list of stipulations. That came very late in the game. Prior to the vote, the committee also, and Big Park Council, set up a public participation forum, if you will, where people from the county could, from the community could get up and speak their concerns. It was a sold-out audience, if you will, standing room only. A lot of people, a lot of, I'm going to guess here, because as the secretary, I actually was the one that called up all of them. I'm going to take my best guess, but I'm going to say that we had something on the order of 50 speakers. All but one was opposed. So you have a community here that had very strong feelings, not just about it being a hotel, but about public safety and other kinds of issues that weren't being discussed. Those issues weren't really being discussed with the applicant or even at the committee level. That being the case, that forum happened. The next thing that happened is we did have our Big Park meeting. I should go back and say that when the committee made their decision, this time with respect to the recommendation to the council, it was not a unanimous six-zero vote. There were nine, and it was six to three. That's what the committee, so the committee's recommendation was a split vote. It was not unanimous. That's where I took exception to part of Randy's description of what happened.
Yeah, I apologize. I was, I was told that those three members abstaining from the vote, therefore, would be a unanimous decision.
No, they were not.
You clarified it. You've done a great job of also putting more information. I was trying to keep it real short, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the process it's gone through because, as you said, Big Park is kind of an odd duck. And we try to go out of our way to accommodate the community and make sure that those voices are heard as much as possible in any decision that would affect them. So thank you for clarifying that for me.
Correct me. So the committee came back with their split recommendation, and their recommendation was to approve with this list of stipulations that they had worked out with the Patel's and Ms. Bodler. We had our council meeting. Mr. Williams was present. Leah was present. Again, it's a sellout crowd. We held it at the Church of the Nazarene in the VOC to accommodate the community. And that was a decisive opposition vote. I'd like to read that to you as a matter of fact so that we're...
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Of the six people voting no against the project, what was their reasoning?
Six voted for.
The six voted for on the committee. Six were in favor, three were against. The six that were in favor felt, and they stated, actually from the very beginning, we're talking about the committee now, not the council, we're talking about the committee and its recommendations. I think I'd be square when the members that voted for it felt that it was the best the community could do. I think that they felt that getting a little bit of easement and a little bit of height restriction was the best that they could do. The three individuals that voted against it, I know them well and I know their reasoning well, and they felt that that wasn't the case and in fact that there were public safety issues and other issues affecting the health, the vitality, the character of the community that had never been adequately addressed. So allow me to read you what the motion that was on the floor that was passed at the Big Park Council, at the council level. This is the decision of the council itself. I wrote the letter, I'll read it exactly. Dear Leah, thanks to you and Dave for joining us today for our regular monthly meeting. As you witnessed, the council, upon motion duly made and seconded, adopted the following resolution. The Big Park Regional Coordinating Council opposes the Big Park Council Planning and Zoning Committee Resolution presented at the Big Park meeting on June 13th. The Big Park Regional Coordinating Council is opposed to the rezoning of parcel 405-33-479G with the comment to the county that the rezoning is not in the best interest of the community. That's where the Big Park Council stands. Any other questions?
Ms. Mallory.
Has, with other situations in the area, do you always, has this always been the process as far as the opposition? I mean, like hotels, does your council weigh in on all of those businesses that come in?
Yeah, little things are big things. Like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the term is that we are an agent for the county meeting that with issues that come up within a perimeter, we get a chance to... um, we get a chance to, um, weigh in on them. And that's really as far as it goes. We're weighing in and just providing the county with some seat, feedback about how that project actually impacts the neighbors, so to speak.
The, the council is extremely engaged in anything that happens within that community, and the meetings are well attended, and the discussions tend to be very thorough. So they are appreciated for their efforts and their work. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Marty, you're exchanging hand signals at the moment. Um, as far as an agent status, I would disagree with that. For the zoning ordinance, they're an interested party, uh, bringing forth comments for the relation to zoning. Agent, I think, implies other things legal with it. Under the zoning ordinance, uh, Big Park, as well as all of our community groups, would be interested parties.
Yeah, um, thank you for the clarification. It's, uh, semantics always becomes a little problematic, and it's good that we make sure everybody is labeled appropriately as we move through this. So thank you. Uh, the next, uh, group that went to after it went through that process was it came to the county's own planning and zoning commission. Uh, that commission is made up of 10 members. Uh, each district has two representatives on that commission, and they get together and they review these applications as they come forward. And their, uh, their response to that application is then forwarded to us as a recommendation either for or against the project and with or without stipulations as presented or added. So with that, uh, we do have two members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If either or both of you would like to get up and speak to your process and, and how it went and give us the understanding of what you came back with in your decision, that would be appreciated.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As was stated, there's been several processes...
You haven't introduced yourself.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yes, Tim Stewart, current chairman of the Yampai County Planning and Zoning Commission.
In, uh, Muma, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Very thankful.
As stated, we, uh, did go through several hearings on this. I did request at one point that we have a site visit so we could get a better understanding of the land and some of the concerns that we were going to be facing before we went through the first public hearing. After that, I did have our second meeting I went through, and I did send a note to, uh, Mr. Williams. I just said, "Dave, I want to express my deep appreciation for the help and support. You and your staff gave me on my request to shorten our commission hearing process on designing zoning map change hearing item HA, H18052 on the Patel property." The reasoning for that was the first fact-finding meeting, we went almost 10 hours. So a lot of us are volunteers and as the commission came back to me and wanted to know if they could shorten this in any way. It was very important that the commission hear the major concerns of the opposition and those in support so the commissioners could make an informed decision on the validity of this hearing application. By limiting the equal amount of time on both the opposition and support, we were able to have a very informed understanding of both sides of the issue to keep the meeting under four hours. I consider myself and our commissioners very fortunate for having a chance to work with an expert of your caliber, and again, this was to Mr. Williams. I value the knowledge and insight that you and your staff have and your willingness to share it with us to make informed decisions for Yampai County. You took the commission's suggestions and worked with the applicant to make the changes needed to reach a unanimous decision on this challenging application, and it was a unanimous vote by your Planning and Zoning Commission on this. And again, thank you for your support. And with that meeting, that's where we came in with the suggested stipulations and the changes, trying to again protect the property, listening to the concerns of those in opposition, and also those that were in support of the project. And again, that, uh, I'm sure you may have gotten a copy of it, Dave did read it, but stipulation number five was removed, stipulation number six was modified, and stipulations 10 and 11, pardon, were added upon the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that, uh, number 10 was if built as a hotel, the maximum height shall be 34 foot, measured from the natural grade including the parapets. Maximum height of the elevator stairwells and shade structures shall be 44 feet as measured from the natural grade. And then number 11, if built as a non-hotel use, the maximum building height shall be 30 foot as measured from the natural grade. So again, trying to protect the interests of both those that were in support and opposition of this. Mr. Lumar, did you have any to add to that?
A couple statements. Again, Mark Lumal, Planning and Zoning Commissioner for District Three. I'm also a former, uh, Planning and Zoning Committee Chair of the Big Park Council, a member, past member for many years of the Big Park Regional Council, and a resident of this community for 25 years. Um, first of all, um, I want to say that, um, the commission always, uh, expected that this was gonna get rezoned commercial that was consistent with the area, that the RCU2A was a holding zoning, uh, was a holding zoning designation. Um, I'd also like to say that, you know, the, this would love to have seen a community park or something like that go in there, but that's not within the commission's charter to, uh, to be able to do that. Um, the protection by the stipulations is huge. And, um, it's not just the height restrictions. Typically, a C2 zoning will allow C2-1 with allowed building heights of 50 feet. And there's two stipulations that are stating that it's limited, um, I forget the exact wording, to basically 34 feet if it's built as a hotel. If it's any other use, it's limited to 30 feet. So we are protecting, um, protecting that high, that height and protects that view shed to the, to the north considerably. But that's not the only thing that's used. It's the setbacks. The setbacks off of 179 and the setbacks off of Jack's Canyon are considerably more than what's required in the standard C2 zoning. And those, by having those kinds of setbacks, as you drive up, um, 179, building a setback behind the hill to a large degree, and it doesn't block the, um, the views. We're, we're seeing a public storage, mini-storages going up where they don't, they were allowed to build that as a matter of right, and they don't have those setbacks. And it's a big, big difference in terms of the effect on the use, of use set. So that's basically, I think, that the feeling of the commission, why they voted unanimously for this, that this was, um, a good set of stipulations that the applicant has agreed to. And those stipulations, um, still stay in force even if the applicant were to sell the property. And thus was important that we made sure we protected that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Again, that was certainly discussed with the applicant as well as those that were in support and opposition of the program. We tried to listen to each and every concern, worked with the applicant to make changes where we could, and again, it did come out as a unanimous decision by the council.
Great. Uh, any questions? Uh, while I, I'll, I, I'll make some comments. I appreciate, um, every step that this has gone through and all of those involved in, in the public process. And, uh, your board, your commission did a yeoman's job of trying to be open and hear from everybody. And as you stated, you have well over 14 hours just of public participation in these meetings, let alone all of the homework and the time you spent on this and your commission spent on this outside of those meeting hours. I think one thing that, um, people may not fully understand or appreciate is that, uh, private property rights in Arizona are fairly strong, and, uh, your function, uh, as opposed to the functions of the two entities before you, the, the Big Park Regional Council as well as their Planning and Zoning Committee, uh, they, they have no legal obligation. Uh, you do, and you have, you have the rules of development as your guidelines. And so when you look at a project like this, uh, you can't take into account perceptions and one of the issues, you have to look at the rules that are stated before you and what can and can't happen with that property to make sure that follows the guidelines of whatever the request is that's being made. So I want to go back to private property rights in this state. This, this parcel is RCU2, which for all accounts is a lack of zoning. And, uh, everybody wants to say it's residential. It is not residential. It's a lack of zoning. And this property, based on the other conditions and uses of those properties up and down this corridor, uh, are commercial, and to expect anything less on this property is, is not realistic. Uh, when this was set up as an HOA, that land was designated at that point as commercial use. It just never became anything until the applicant actually came forward with the desire to build on that land, which they have finally done after more than 25 years of ownership. So where, where we're at today, we've got a piece of property, we have a zoning that's asking for it to be made to make it more consistent and concurrent with the, the conditions and uses around it. Uh, I can understand the community not being happy about it. Growth is here. Tourism's here. It's unfortunately, uh, the product of where we've gone and where we've become, but it is here. And, uh, one thing I want to keep people understanding is, these zonings exist up and down this corridor. If you think this is the last time you're gonna be seeing development in that corridor, you're wrong. So, uh, it's time that we come together and we start figuring out, uh, the bigger, broader discussion and understanding of land use and how that'll affect these communities and how we want our communities to develop. But on this particular piece, the, the die was cast, in my opinion, decades ago. So here we are. Uh, you brought the landowner, the developer in, they sat down, they worked very diligently with the community to make sure they could satisfy as many requirements or wishes as possible, and they did. There, there's a, a host of, of stipulations that are attached to this application. And I want people to be really cognizant that these are rights that they're giving up. They've given up rights on this property in order to develop it in a manner that they see fit. And that's the truth, like it or not. Those are rights that they have given. In a way, if they came in and asked for a straight through, straight through zoning change, those rights, those conditions that were set by the community and asked for by the community would not be upheld and would not be part of this application. So it may not be exactly what you wish to see on that property. People said we should make it a park. Unfortunately, I don't own the property, you don't own the property, the application doesn't want a park. So they paid good money for that property, they wish to develop it, and they're moving that process through here, and here's where we are today. But in that way, they have taken away all of those rights that they have to develop their property, and there should be some consideration that process may not have worked the way you wanted it to, but I think the process worked and you'll have an outcome that at least somewhat matches the desires of the community, maybe not fully in all eyes, but I think they've gone out of their way to be open and helpful to meet the community's wishes. So that said, I'm just wanting to reiterate the process is, is you're very much tied to legality and process where we have the ability to not be tied to those outcomes.
Absolutely correct.
So, so that's, that comes to where you came with your decision.
And that is very, very true. And again, we did try to work both with those in opposition and support as well as the Patel's. And they did come back and agree and give them and meet what the commission had asked them to do. So again, trying to protect the property as well as Yampai County.
Great, thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address the, uh, the audience with one fact, that one concern I have as a, as a supervisor up here is we appoint a P&amp;Z committee. They spend hours, like this with the example, hours on top of hours. And I, I find it very hard to go against planning zoning when they are unanimously against or in favor of an item. So I, for one, am taking that very seriously. I don't totally understand the Big Park's standing in this, their position, Mr. Chairman, but I do understand our own planning and zoning commission, which covers all of you on that count.
Thank you very much. Um, as, uh, for the audience upstairs, we still have a couple seats open down here. We're gonna be moving to public participation. If any of you would like to come down, we have at least two or three seats open. Feel free to come on down and grab one. Uh, what we're gonna do now, as I said, we're kinda going through the process and the way it unfolded. That has been how this has made it its way to, to where we are today. And what we're gonna have left is public participation directly to the board. So even though you may have spoken in favor or against previously at any other of those opportunities, today is gonna be your last shot at this if the board moves through with an approval or a rejection until the next application is made. So with that, what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna read the do not wish to speak. Uh, call the public first, and then I'm gonna have a list out three people with the first person in line to come up and speak. If the next two would get in line, and we'll continue to add one to that list as we go down, in a way we can try and save as much time having you all up and ready to the podium. Uh, so if you're upstairs and you hear a name call, you're gonna have a couple minutes to get down here and get in line. So don't fret, the elevator is slow, but it should make it. Uh, so with that, I have a list of do not wish to speak public participation forms. So I'm gonna read those into the record just so we have them. I have a Margaret Kirstenson is opposed, does not wish to speak. I have a Tom Parsons, opposed, does not wish to speak, totally against the rezoning issue and a lack of concern of people's concerns about protecting the village. I have a Mary Ann Kenny, the proposal is inconsistent with the small-town nature of our village, please put a stop to this. I have a Richard Holpison, I'm forgetting the name, I strongly oppose the rezoning hotel because of traffic issues and loss of sense of place in the village. Steve McLean is opposed, was told when we purchased our home that no large multi-story businesses would be built in the location under question. You should talk to your real estate agent about that. Kathy Gasta, please vote no on the Patel Hotel. Michael Boska, those who vote yes, next election will be voted out. Thank you for your concerns. Laura Craciato, sorry about that, uh, opposed. Paul Cooley, opposed. Kendra Faulner, Faul, Faulner, opposed. Karen Batterick, opposed to more hotels. John Black with 1,700 letters of opposition and CCNRs that prohibit construction of multi-story buildings, his proposed development is not compatible with the clearly stated position of the community. Karen Keane, I am totally opposed to the rezoning. I've been a homeowner in VOC for 11 years. It will be detrimental to the quality of life we have in the VOC and the residents will not profit at all. Phyllis Elliott, opposed. Steve Nichols, opposed. Deborah Stein, Stein, traffic pattern concerns with one road onto Jack's Canyon, ruined views coming into VOC, water, don't need more hotel rooms. Grace Pervall, the community must be represented in this decision, we do not need another hotel in the village, studies are incomplete, et cetera. Charlene Cook, send letter in, opposition, opposed. Byron Philpott, opposed. Terrence Cook, opposed. Kathy Husstetter, well, it doesn't say opposed, but I'm gonna take it as an opposed, just didn't sign off on it. Uh, did not wish to speak. Uh, a Barbor, is that? Uh, opposed. Kathleen Lovell, opposed. Darcy Philpott, it will create too much congestion on, on, we don't need another hotel in the village, and we don't need another hotel in the village. Sorry about that. Robin, uh, land should be used for employee housing, there are too many hotel rooms in the VOC already. Angela Ferrari, having lived in Coronado del Mar, California for 30 years, I witnessed a small community burst into a dense money machine for the wealthy and powerful. a dense money machine for the wealthy and powerful. This rezoning issue is about money and power, not about the welfare of the land and its people. Leaders lead by being a part of the community and following the people's wishes. This is not democracy attempting to silence the people and dictate on dictatorship. Thank you for your opinion. Tammy Driver, we do not need another hotel in Sedona. People come to see land, not buildings. Darby Tetsal, sorry, strongly opposed this hotel rezoning. David Kinstry, opposed. Scratched out. I'm going to take that as nothing. Steven Newhouse, opposed. Jeff and Jan Cowherd, we totally oppose the rezoning proposal. Philip Baugh, great opposition. Timothy Miller, traffic issues imposes on views, does not take views of community into account. Milesh Baka, sorry about that once again, same name, opposed. Mitch Lart, opposed. Please do not circumvent CCNRs in the neighborhood and preserve the small-town community and safety for all. Kathleen Grams Newhouse, opposed. Mr. John Bucking, opposed. Alfred Cape, I believe. What precedent does this set? Opposed. Holly McLaughlin, as a Pine Creek 2 homeowner, I want you to uphold our CCNRs. Do not violate... I'm going to say that's a thus, 16-foot max rule. Do not destroy our neighborhood and any other neighborhoods. Ash Patel is opposed. Sent letter of opposition. My sentiments have not changed. This rezon is not in favor of the benefit of all VOC residents and existing businesses. Harold Sweet, opposed. Land development, tunnel effect along main roads. William Smith, opposed. Traffic is already horrible. No chance to get out in emergency as it is. Barb Gordon is opposed. Donald Williams, unless, opposed. Unless additional stipulation added, max hike 35 feet, including parapets and roof structures. No hotel customers shall be allowed on roof, i.e. no bar lounge on roof. Cornelia Landis is opposed. Adamant, in my opposition to Patel's operating a hotel on this property. Carlin Coleman, opposed. Not sure where to go with this. It looks like a list of names. Let's see if we can get through it. Cheryl Christensen, Carol Rodger, and Garvey Gordon, Garvey, Kim Francisco, Teresa Caldwell, Lisa Snowden, Art Bertolino, Bertolino. I can't even begin to read the next one. Paula Mara, or Jane, sorry if I that's opposed. Alexander Lifson, I believe the community should have a say in the trajectory of growth of our town. We, the VOC, woke up. We're paying attention and taking action. Thank you. Hava Derby is opposed. We are being censored and we are not okay with this. Sorry, I don't see why you're being censored, but we're trying our best. Lois Sidris, Sidris, what good is zoning if it can be changed at will? No zoning changes. Darryl West Lusher, Yavapica County, the most corrupt county in the state of Arizona. All development must have for both of the people. Thank you for your concerns. Gary Marsh, opposed. Alex Wertz, opposed. Michael Rosati, opposed. Natalie Erd, opposed. Joan Cossey, opposed. Dave Chamber, opposed. Can't, canter, camera. Mike Koopsen, this project destroys the views of Sedona. Traffic is not owned by the people in Sedona, is not wanted by people in VOC. It increases risk of fire. Traffic destroys value of VOC and is in blatant disregard to the voices of VOC residents. We have Cindy Koopsen. This represents an increase in traffic and fire danger is not wanted by the community, is not needed in the community. It devalues the area, does not support the environment, ruins views, does not... Something. People from Sedona is owned by people outside our community who do not care about VOC, only money. Charles Crawford, opposed, says he attached, has a long list thing. I'll put that in the record. You can read it from there. "Do Not Wish to Speak," great. Martina, you'll have to forgive me, Manuel. I keep hearing that this is what we, the residents, need. Really, we don't need another hotel. We don't need something, something. We need to preserve the something, area, uniqueness of this something. Can't read the rest, sorry. And we have Robert Speroski. Cottonwood is fine as is. Rezoning, do not want any good. Do no one any good. Cottonwood is fine. Okay. Those were the "Do Not Wish to Speak." So, that moves us into the "Do Wish to Speak" people. So, first up, we'll have Barb Gordon. Although you just said you didn't wish to speak, but we'll go ahead. And next behind that is Kelly Ross, and behind that is Thomas McPherson. Please come on up. And if you would, please state your name and the area you live in, just for the public record. Thank you for being here.
Ms. Gordon, can I butt in real quick?
Yes, sir. I just want to remind everybody, due to the fact that we're not going to be here until 10 o'clock tonight, if you're saying something that is exactly what the person in front of you or others in front of you have said, please just say, "I agree with them." Because it's, just hearing it over and over and over is nauseous, and that doesn't help anybody or the situation. We need to get across this constantly. Yeah, please. We do absolutely want to hear what you have to say, but we don't need to hear 100 people saying the exact same thing. And if you start to repeat what has already been said before, we're going to move you along. So, please, let us know your wishes, let us know your wants and your concerns, and we do want to hear from you. So, thank you for being here today. Ms. Gordon?
Thank you. My name is Barb Gordon, and I live in the Village of Oak Creek. And when I got here today, I did not think I wanted to speak because I think you've heard it all. But then, thanks to Supervisor Thurman, I got new information. I've been going to meetings and hearing about this since December 28th, I think is when I first saw the first application. And throughout the process, I have heard over and over, we have to pass this because if we don't, we'll be sued. The county's going to be sued. Somebody... There's this message about lawsuits and how scary that is. And I've been trying to figure out why. Why? Why would the county be sued? Why can't you say no to this? And you helped me today because you mentioned there's a state, I don't know if you said law?
Statute.
State statute. That I, first time I heard of that, that could, or it sounds like is scaring you from saying no to this application. And I want to be really loud and clear and tell you, get sued. I would be perfectly happy to have my staff, you, by a lawsuit that would set a precedent that this shouldn't happen. Clearly, the community does not want this. The community plan, well, we don't recognize community plans. I mean, we've told you, we've given you all the proof that we don't want this in the community, and we believe it won't fit in the community. We hear that the corridor is all commercial. There's a residential property exactly across the street. I just don't buy into all the arguments that this has to be C21. I just don't buy it. The CCNRs say business purpose. They say no full two-story buildings. If somebody bought property there, and I live in the village and I know about these other communities... Okay, sorry.
Thank you very much. We are going to exercise a little decorum in this meeting. Please no clapping or outbursts. We want everybody to have their chance to come to the podium and talk. That is your participation. And if it gets out of hand, we will shut down the meeting and reconvene later. So, please, try and show not only the people at the podium a little respect, but those of us in the room that also are here as part of this process. And to speak to Ms. Gordon's comments, I think you need to understand that when he says we're going to be sued, that's absolutely the worst path we can go down with this project. Because what will happen is if we were to turn it down, and we turn it down, if that happens, the Patel's have the ability to take that decision to court. And I would imagine they would take that decision to court, asking for a flat variance on the zoning change with no conditions attached to it whatsoever. The court will come back and look at the land use as it exists, and for all intents and purposes, would most likely give that applicant their zone change regardless of what this board says or does. And it ends at that point. So, right now, the process we're in is giving the community the best chance to dictate if a zone change is made, how they want this zone to, this property to develop as it moves forward. So, you don't want to go to court. You don't want us to go to court. And I can tell you, the people on the other side of the hill don't want to pay for us to go to court either. So, while we absolutely want to uphold and abide by your wishes and your wants, this is the process we're in front of right now, and we have very limited options as it moves forward. So, I just wanted to be clear on where this would go in case that is employed. So, I hope that answers a few more questions for people. As such, we have next up Kelly Ross, and behind that, Thomas McPherson, and behind that, Cynthia, or no, sorry, Carlin Coleman. Do we have Kelly Ross going once? Going twice? Okay, we'll move on to Thomas McPherson. And behind that, Carlin Coleman, and behind that, Cynthia Tierra.
Hi. My name's Thomas McPherson. Thanks for everyone on the board. Thank you to staff for their participation and everyone else on various committees that were part of this process. I live in the VOC with my wife, my one-and-a-half-year-old daughter, and our daughter or son on the way. I'm the owner of the collective Sedona. Some of you may know that project. I'm within the 300-foot ring. As a matter of fact, I'm 157 feet away. So, I have a very keen sense of interest in this project. I'm a developer by trade. I am pro-development, but I am pro-thoughtful development. My property is roughly 50,000 square feet, and it is currently zoned under the designation PAD, Planned Area Development. It is not C1 or C2. Again, it is planned area development or PAD. I will benefit tremendously from the rezoning of this to C2 and the subsequent development to a hotel. But, as a member of this community and as someone who is familiar with development, I unfortunately cannot support a blanket zoning to C2. The stipulations that were included are a step in the right direction, but again, they don't hold the Patel's or future owners, they don't hold their feet to the fire in an appropriately narrow manner for this zoning to get my support. Additionally, I think that it's very important for us to understand that if we were to decline this C2 zoning and approve or recommend a PAD zoning, there would be no risk of litigation. Our Big Park Regional Community Coordinating Council voted against this. I just heard 70 letters voting in opposition or voicing, excuse me, voicing their concern and opposition, and I didn't hear a single one in favor. So, again, my position as a developer is, I can't stand behind blanket C2 zoning. It should be PAD. I'm for thoughtful development.
Thank you very much, Mr. McPherson. Next up, we have Carlin Coleman, and at the end of the line, Paul Gazza. Carlin Coleman, welcome in.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I own two properties in the Village of Oak Creek. One of them is a multifamily property, the other's my residence. I don't want to be held hostage by traffic anymore. I've been held hostage all weekend long because of tourism. And I think bringing in a hotel is going to just make that a solid thing. We don't need the traffic. The dream is not Martin Luther King's dream, which was to help people. This dream, I think, is inhibiting the Village of Oak Creek. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just have a question. You called my name, and I don't know when I'm supposed to come up. Cynthia Tierra.
Cynthia, you're next. So, right now, as a matter of fact.
All right. Well, I just saw someone else walk up. That's why I wanted to...
Behind that, we have Paul Gazza, and behind that, David Chave, I believe. Chave, okay, sorry about that. Ms. Tierra?
I'm Cynthia Tierra. I have been a resident of the Village of Oak Creek for 15 years. I purposely chose to live in the village. The village is a wonderful place to live. Of course, things are shifting there. But, there's two things that I want you guys to look at that I saw on those slides that I've seen over and over and over again. Residences are right next to this proposed development. And one of the things they're talking about doing is putting a view platform on top of this hotel. And the people who are staying at this proposed hotel would be able to go up to that view platform and move right down into the backyards of people who live in those houses. And to me, you know, I've lived in New York City. I haven't been thought about it, but this is the village. The other thing I'll say is, something's going to happen, commercial there, but does it have to be the highest commercial development that's possible? Could there not be some kind of compromise that could be reached where it isn't this, like there's, I'm not an expert on this, but there's C1, there's C2, you know, could it go down a notch, is what I'm wondering? And they went up a notch. So, those are my concerns. And the other concerns are already expressed about safety, about traffic, about quality of life. That's the number-one thing I'm concerned about there because I chose to live here. All my neighbors chose to live there. We love living there, and we want to keep our community. We know it's going to shift. We know it's going to change. But, we want that sense that's always been there to continue. And it's being obstructed at this point. And, okay, you staying there going to do more? Well, we still live there. It's our home. Those people are coming in. It's not their home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to reiterate, this is a C2 zone, so C1 actually is more impactful. So, this is the lowest commercial zoning that can be allowed.
This is the reverse. This is the general commercial.
Paul Gazza, and behind that, David Chave, and behind that, Joel Soldan.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Paul Gazza. I live in Bay Park. And you are public servants. You're elected by the people, or in one case, appointed by the board, to represent the interests of the people and governments of this county. And in the matter of the rezoning of the Patel property, over 1,700 people have spoken via letters and testimony, saying in over a 99% majority that they want their zoning request denied, and they have cited valid reasons for doing so. And on this issue, I'm sure that other citizens throughout the county would support the Village of Oak Creek Big Park because even though they are the ones direct, that we are the ones directly impacted, the rest of the county knows that the same thing could happen to them. They know that if it did, they would want their representatives on their board to hear them and to act in accordance with their wishes. And as I see it, this isn't a time to assume that you're going to get sued, assume you're going to lose, assume it's going to be worse. This is a time to stand with the people. It's a time to represent with your vote, the 99% majority of people who have communicated with you on this issue and vote to deny the rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Joel Soldan, and... Abbott? Can't read the right. Sorry. Is that Cyrus Elliott? Is that it? Okay. And you know who you are. Gary Cooper. Mr. Soldan, please.
I'm Chave. You called me.
Oh, did I give way to him for him? I did. Sorry about that. Mr. Chave, please come on. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, board. I just moved to recently...
I just moved to recently, six months ago, I suffered PTSD, moved from Southern California thinking this was going to be a beautiful place. And seven years ago, when we came here, it was very quiet. But the concern I have is employment. You have such an employment problem at Walmart, you have lists everywhere in Sedona, Codwell, the police department, the sheriff department. I want to know where the employees are going to come from? Where is the housing going to come from? Because you can build a hotel, but there's no one to work at it, it's not going to run. You know, I think of the water concern, because I, my wife talked to the water department and said the strain that it could be on to Oak Creek, which I guess is our water source, our main water source. And I don't think any consideration's been done on that. But especially the housing. We live in the village of Oak Creek, there's no housing. There's no housing almost in Codwell, there's no lower house housing. So, I just wish you would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just so you can make it or not make it part of your comments, the water and the sewer for this property, as it develops, will be provided by private entities. One is a sewer district, the other is a private water utility. Those utilities have not stepped up and voiced any concerns with whatever with having the ability or the infrastructure in place to support this development, or any development on our property. So, I understand your concerns, and I appreciate you coming up and voicing them, I just want to make that clarification for the general...
And again, I come back to state law again. State law denies that the board of supervisors of any county in the state of Arizona to look at subdivision or zoning change on the availability of water, lack of or plenty of. We're not, we're forbidden even to talk about it.
Believe it or not. Doesn't mean we don't care, it just means we're not allowed to make it part of our decision, unfortunately. Joel Solden, then we have Cyrus Elliott, and then we have Gary Crouppa. Sorry.
My name is Joel Solden. I wish to be one of the people who would not get up to speak, because I'm a nervous wreck. But even though I don't like doing this, I've done it every time I had an opportunity to do it, all the meetings, this is the fourth time I've gotten up nervously to talk in front of people. That's because I'm so passionate for where I live. I've heard stories that, you know, about their life dreams. My life dream was to, my life dream was to move to a beautiful place, Sedona. My life's dream was to leave the village of Oak Creek, because it's one of the mellor places. So, other people talk about their life dreams that impose upon other people, I don't see where they're coming from. You talk about, there's rules and regulations. I see these two ugly buildings get built there, and who's going to go back and remeasure to see if they're, they fit what they were supposed to be? Who's going to go back there? I've been fighting with Dark Sky community about how bright it is. For six months or more, I've talked to assistant supervisor, I've talked to other people. And, you know, you have all these plans, and then they have to abide by this, that, and the other. But there's nobody goes back, and if they don't do it, it's higher than it's supposed to be, if they're, the lights are brighter, they don't do anything about it.
Thank you, sir. And I can guarantee you, we absolutely do go back and we watch all that as it happens, and...
Not yet. Put on my second.
Cyrus Elliott, up next, Gary Crouppa, and Al Richmond. And we do thank you. It's no easier to be on that side of the podium than this side, believe me. So, we appreciate you being here and sharing your opinions.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
I'm a veteran, I have lived in the village for 10 years, moved from Minnesota. We love living in Sedona, we love living in the village of Oak Creek. Earlier you noted that, you said that this early designation of this property was a holding pattern for something else. Okay? I want to know what this board's going to do about the increased traffic? Is there any plans for changing the configuration of the highway? Is there any plans for taking people who stay at these hotels safely across 179 to be developing the other side? Are there any plans for increasing the presence of law enforcement in the village? Is there any concrete plans for enforcing the Dark Sky? I wonder if you've considered any of this before you vote?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing your concerns. We don't, in any manner whatsoever, have control over the 179 corridor, that is AGA. They built that road at a three or four time cost. Taking into consideration the views and the concerns of the citizens, I doubt very much they're ever going to come back and rebuild that road. It is what it is. So, if there's traffic concerns, unfortunately, that falls on them. It is what we've got, and it is what the community wanted, and that's what they built. Dark Sky, we absolutely continue to enforce Dark Sky, and you have a very active Dark Sky committee over in the village that makes sure that we do our job in protecting that. So, thank you for coming forward. We have Gary Crouppa, behind that, Al Richmond, and behind that, Bill Kushner. Sir.
Good morning, world of supervisors. My name is Gary Crouppa, and I live in the village of Oak Creek, and professionally on certified public account. I'd like to ask you, first, you on the board of supervisors, how many of you live in the village of Oak Creek? Okay. So, I think that, that says quite a lot. Okay, so...
I don't believe that's a comment that I have. I personally take a front to that. I live in the Ebb and Bine County. You're buying, what I'm concerned is...
Can you say it?
You have a prime county as a whole. He pulled his time for it.
Yes.
Just wondering, our commissioner does live in the village of Oak Creek.
The commissioner?
Commissioner Moma lives, he's one of your neighbors.
I understand.
There is representation.
Okay. Okay, so, I agree with most of the comments that were made before. And basically, it's just that I feel that we, as residents of the village of Oak Creek, should be, our wishes should be considered seriously, because we own most of the properties collectively in the village, and we pay most of the taxes, and we constitute most of the So, in that, in that case, we can be considered to be major stakeholders in any matters that affect us as a community. However, I, I believe that you, as the supervisors of Yalapai County, will make the best decisions in the interest of Yalapai County. So, we can trust in that. However, in making that decision, you should also do what is in our best interest, because we're residents of Yalapai County too. So, if, by deciding strictly in favor of commercial development in the village, you discourage people from living there, it'll mean less revenue for the area, because tourists generally are for Sedona, and spend most of their time there, that's the tourist hub. I wish to just address my fellow residents living in the village of Oak Creek, that my new organization, VOC Inc., has been actively working, we've been actively working on incorporating the village, so that we'll have more of a say in zoning matters such as this, a concern with VOC. We need your support in this project, if it is to, if it is to succeed. Please feel free to contact me if you'd like to get more involved.
Great. Thank you very much. Please don't be nervous coming up to hear the mic, this is, we're all one big group, we're, we're all in it together, and we absolutely want to hear what you have to say, and your concerns, and try not to be nervous, we're, we're all working through it together. We have Al Richmond, next is Bill Kushner, and behind that, Mary Morris. Mr. Richmond? Go on. Okay, next up, Mr. Kushner, please. And behind Ms. Morris, we have Mary Pope. Good morning, sir. Still isn't one.
I'm Bill Custer, sorry, I lost him in the crowd back there. A little bit of background, I was the previous, previous, previous chair of the planning and zoning committee of the Big Park Council. We've had much discussion, just like we've had today. Many years ago, we were going to build that a two-story hotel, that was about 100 rooms. Now we've got a request for 150-room, three-story hotel. The P&amp;Z committee rejected the proposal back then. The Big Park Council said, no, we don't want that hotel. The county listened to us and rejected that proposal. I hope we can do that one more time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kushner. I believe it is a two-story. Next up, we have Mary Morris, and then Mary Pope, and we have Kevin O'Connor after that. Good morning, Ms. Morris.
So they can all see.
You've got two minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Mary Morris, village of Oak Creek resident. Thanks for taking the testimony today, really appreciate it. I think some of the things that we're so concerned about is the, after seeing what a C2-1 zoning allows, and that's not for any community participation, we're extremely worried that moving this immediately from residential to commercial could really cause us exactly what we've been seeing over the last year with the development of the Element Hotel that's not even yet open, and, and this three-story V-blocking storage facility. Now, the, recently Chairman Garrison posed a rhetorical question, whether we shut the gates. It's stunning that the opposition to inappropriate development could be seen as a no-growth position that desires no change ever, and only wants to shut the gates. To the contrary, we do want a gate shut, but not on this gate that Mr. Garrison describes. No, the gate we want shut, that has been open far too long, is to poor planning and development applications that do not align with our community visions or the Verde Valley Region Land use plan. We do want the gate shut on poor development approval processes that leaves the community plan or vision statements out of the decision-making equation, and the preponderance of yes votes on all development applications that become, that come before the board of supervisors. We want the gate shut on those who do not respect our community plans, who despite their campaign promises do not listen, do not advocate for the implementation of our community vision statements. We're distressed by those supervisors who seem unwilling to represent the voters who have trusted them to advocate for the small-town, character, equestrian lifestyles, and those intrinsic qualities that we've promised to protect in garnering the scenic highway designation. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the map. Mary Pope is up next, followed by Kevin O'Connor, and behind that, Camille Ford. Ms. Pope.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Pope. My husband and I live in La Baranca in the village of Oak Creek. My reason for speaking to you today is to provide additional information on the fire evacuation through the critical intersection of Jack's Canyon Road and State Road 179, where the Patels proposed to build. At the county planning and zoning meeting, Matt Uma made light of evacuation concerns based on his personal experience with the 2006 La Baranca fire. His comments were dangerously incomplete. In his 2008 presentation to the residents of La Baranca, Gary Johnson, fire marshal, emphasized the danger we would be in should a fire begin further to the west in the village. At his recommendation, we've done fire clearing, but that is woefully inadequate when we are surrounded by national forest, open spaces, and undeveloped land. We have done all that we can privately, and now look to you for help. You have in your hand a satellite map showing the fire department's concerns. The yellow arrow shows the prevailing winds, and the starting point for the La Baranca fire is marked by a black flame in the center. They, we also show, I apologize, the ways out, they're all dead-end. Please, work with the fire department, sheriff's office, and forest service to assure that we, your constituents, are protected by a comprehensive emergency evacuation plan before allowing any development at the intersection of Jack's Canyon Road and State Road 179. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up will be Kevin O'Connor, behind that, we have Camille Ford, and behind that, Mr. O'Connor, supervisor.
My name is Kevin O'Connor, and I'm here to represent the Village of Oak Creek Association. We're almost three hours into this presentation, and I have yet to hear that word. I represent the Architectural Review and Restrictions Committee as chairman and a member of the Board of Directors. We should not be here today. Many here will speak in direct opposition to the construction of getting out of hotel in the village. As property owners and residents, I laud their position, how they want their community evolved. We have a different role in the HOA community, and that we have a legal allegation to enforce and uphold the CCNRs of 23-odd subdivisions. I've heard nothing from development services, most property owners, acknowledging that this property is part of the Village of Oak Creek Association. In 1992, the Patels purchased this lot, number 904, Track B, Pine Creek 2 subdivision. In doing so, they signed a contract with not only VOCA, but with all of their neighbors and owners within the Village of Oak Creek Association. That contract was to uphold the CCNRs of Pine Creek 2 subdivision, and a master declarations and a bylaws that defined VOCA for 50 years. I take for granted that in taking up this matter, you at least have some familiarity with the CCNRs of Pine Creek 2, which begin with the following: Know all men and women. The undersigned owners, constituting the owners of the majority of Track A, Track B, lots 2 through 52, clearly including Track A and B, in all the following 12 stipulations. Now, I don't go through the 12, but the important ones. These 12 non-subordinate clauses define the use of all lots, including A and B, Track for Lot 904. Number one says specifically, includes all provisions of the master declarations of VOCA. That's the first thing. Allows for business use of Track B, but provides no further relief in the CCNRs for business use. Property can be used for business use, but many others. Restrictions, restricts, number three, restricts construction on all lots, including A and B, to one single-family dwelling because of either Zoned R1 or RCU 2A. Number five, restricts construction to 16 feet in elevation on all lots, and this allows two-story constructions on all lots. Our interpretations of the CCNR conclude that while Lot 904 might be used for business purposes via clause 2, that purpose must conform to all other restrictions defined in the CCNRs and master declaration. All other VOCA subdivisions with similar restrictions, and there are some, have conformed to that. The Patels have presented two different plans to the AR, both have been denied as seriously non-conforming. Nevertheless, they continue to pursue approval through Yalapai County. To my knowledge, this is unprecedented move by a developer to bypass the VOCA master declarations and CCNRs and bylaws. The Patels have a contractual agreement with VOCA for 28-some years. It's not only inappropriate, but improper for the Yalapai Board of Supervisors to entertain a proposal that's clearly in violation of a long-term contractual obligation between the property owners and the Village of Oak Creek Association.
Thank you, sir. Just to clarify, the applicant actually did spell out that this property has CCNRs attached to it, and also, that is not anything that the board of supervisors is capable of chiming in on CCNRs.
You're capable of putting a stipulation in that would conform to those CCNRs?
We, we cannot.
You could.
We cannot. So, we cannot take into consideration CCNRs, I apologize for that, but that is the way it works. But I have been to VOCA and their board meetings several times, you've seen me there...
You've seen me there. I've asked numerous times for Voca as a board to chime in specifically on this project, and every time I ask, I'm told they're not going to come out with a statement of pro or con until after a decision is made by this board.
That's correct.
So, we have tried to make Voca part of this discussion, and Voca as a whole has not done so.
The ARC committee has spoken loudly and clearly.
But the board did not.
The ARC committee is the one that's charged with the legal obligations to enforce the CCNRs. The board supports that action, but until you make a decision here today, the Board of Directors has nothing directly to work with. When you decide today pro or con on this, then the Board of Directors of the Voca Association will act on it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for clarifying that.
I have to butt in again, again, on the legal thing is that you've got to understand CCNRs by state law are not enforceable by county or any municipal government. That's a civil matter, and if you disagree with what the board does, you have the right to take that, our applicant, to court, but that we fully understand.
Yeah, okay. Fully understand. Thank you, sir.
We have Camille DeFord. Behind that, Nina Joy Rizzo, and behind that, Lenore Hemingway.
Actually, that's my maiden name, and I already spoke.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much. Okay. Nina Joy Rizzo, please. Lenore Hemingway, and then Leon Pelletier.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was sitting upstairs, and I was taking notes, and I heard somebody say, "Well, if you just take the emotion out of this, you have a pretty simple rezoning issue." How can you take the emotions out of this when you have constituents totaling over a minimum N-plus-1,700 opposing this? I heard comments, "Well, I don't know why the Big Park Council would be against this." Well, take a look. We're telling you why. We have serious issues. I am the alternate for Pine Creek 2. I represent Pine Creek 2. Do you know that the west side of Pine Creek 2, residents and homeowners there are, by FEMA, were declared a flood zone, first of all? Second of all, you talk about your stipulations and your setbacks. Your 40-foot will be 80 feet to us because we are already below the grade. So, if you ever drove into our neighborhood, you would see even 16 feet, which is what the SRP, we can still see that above our roofs. You put a wall up there, you affect our lifestyles, you affect our community, you affect the washes, you affect the flood zone, you affect everything in our community, our dream, why we move there. I am buying my house. My landlord is one of the best landlords I have. He is also a builder and developer. He said to me quite clearly, "When you buy this house, you will never have any big building there because they cannot go over 16 feet, and there is absolutely no two-story anything permitted." Yes, there's a business zone permission, but you cannot go over those CCNRs. I understand you cannot be responsible for them, but you can certainly support us who vote you in and not allow ours to be betrayed and violated. You do it to us, who are you guys going to do it to next? So, please, say no.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your time. Lenore Hemingway. Next up is Leon Pelletier. After that, and next up would be Donna Michaels. Same way.
Good morning. Lenore Hemingway. I'm a business owner and a resident in the Village of Oak Creek, and it is with very sadness and overwhelming disappointment that I feel I must speak today on behalf of our local residents in front of you. In my opinion, from the comments that I've heard today from many of you, you have already chosen to disregard the voice of people. In my opinion, it is greed of the county that you have locked arms with the landowner who has shown nothing but hate and distaste for our community. Because if they really cared about our community as they say they do, they would be looking at something that the residents can use. How many of our residents do you think are going to go stay at that hotel? None. It could be a park, it could be a medical center, it could be many things that would benefit the residents. Theirs will not. What a horror show this has been. I want to remind you that when they first submitted this application, it was submitted as a zoning with a hotel. The reason they changed that was recommended by the county that it would be an easier pilt to swab. Make it straight to Z2 zoning change, and then they can do whatever they want. How disgusting. I never thought after 27 years of defending this nation's rights as a military member that I would have to defend my rights as a citizen for safety and protection against this same government. What a tragedy for us in the village. I sincerely hope, if this is approved, that you will all feel some inkling of shame, guilt, and embarrassment over your actions when the day comes, that there's a major incident and there is loss of lives because it's going to happen. Appearances are all telling. We get two minutes to speak. The applicant got as much time as they wanted. They had reserved seating, they were escorted in by a county member, and private meetings on the side. Very sad.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for being here today to share your concerns. I can guarantee you that no decision has been made. We're not lying in our pockets. We listen to everything that's said, and we'll see where this goes when we get done with your participation, but we take this job very seriously, as you do, and we are here to listen to your concerns. So, please, try not to malign or disparage those of us who have to make a decision. It is nothing we're taking lightly, I can guarantee you that. Next up, we have Leon Pelletier. Behind that, we have Donna Michaels, and behind that, we have Joseph R. Something, oh, can't read it, sorry. Mr. Pelletier.
Thank you very much, Leon Pelletier. Myself and Nancy Bellardi live in a property that is adjacent to the property in question. We live to the west, just on the other side of the wash of the property. And I'd like you to take into consideration the effect of building such a hotel or something on that property would do to the people in the area that live adjacent to that property. Think about the construction noise that's going to be happening there as the building goes up, and then after the building is up, the 24/7 activity that this hotel would show in the community would be very detrimental to our quality of life that we live there. We've lived there since the beginning of 2006, and as it is right now, both our properties on either side of us are for sale. So, I was wondering what that's going to do for our property values as far as that goes, as far as even if we want to sell, is if somebody might want to buy a property that is affected by such a building. Also, take into consideration that the properties that we live in, the property that we live in on the other side of the wash is much lower than the grade of the Patel property. So, the heights of all the buildings, it's going to be, you could probably add 10 to 20 feet to that height of the building restrictions that are already on it. So, it's going to be affected that way. So, I ask you to, you know, this change. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here this morning.
Mr. Chair, I need to chime in again on legal. I seem to be the legal guy today. It is against the law, state law, federal law, that any historic water that's been going into an area is diverted and added to adjoining area. Anything outside of that property line has to stay within that property and only exit that property where it has historically exited, or they will never get it.
All right. Next up, we have Donna Michaels, then we have Mr. Yosef R., or, sorry, and we have Dr. Lisa Ferguson, rounding out the list.
Supervisor Garrison, my name is Matt Warner. Donna Michaels had to leave early, and I respectfully ask that you let me read the statement on her behalf.
Sure, but you're going to have to fill out your own form.
Okay.
So, we'll provide one for you, sir, afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, afterwards, go ahead. Come on up. We don't want to stop you.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we get the record. We've got to have the public record.
Thank you for that opportunity. One of the county's concerns for approving this is the potential for a lawsuit. However, that appears to be based on diminished value. The applicant's vacant 4.65-acre residential zoned property is currently assessed at $20,000 with taxes approximately $2,000 per year. The full cash value is $145,000. Compare that to a smaller parcel that is zoned commercial also on this corridor. For example, the Holiday Inn Express is on 2.3 acres with 103 rooms versus the Patel's proposed 165, however, I think I thought that was 150, if that's a correction. The HIB or the Holiday Inn Express is currently assessed at $665,000 with taxes approximately $66,000 per year. The full cash value is $5.1 million. The reason a property owner can sue is if their property values are diminished. We're talking about a property that was purchased as a residential property 20 years ago. They have been paying residential taxes and HOA dues as a residential parcel. I don't understand how this owner is damaged by the enrichment they will immediately receive when this property is rezoned to commercial. Arizona has some of the county's strongest protections for property rights. In 2006, Arizona voters passed the Property Ownership Fairness Act. It bars officials from sticking property owners with the bill when land use restrictions go beyond what's necessary to protect the public, but it also allows for government to bar property uses that threaten public health and safety. This act is by far the nation's strongest protection for property rights, has sent a message to officials that they cannot expect to take Arizona's property without paying for it. However, nor can they redesign neighborhoods to serve the interests of politically powerful developers at the expense of home and small business owners. Prop 207 allows a property owner to recover damages for, quote, "any reduction in their property value which results from a land use regulation such as its zoning ordinance." Just because there is a Prop 207 doesn't mean every zoning change will have a plaintiff because county zoning laws are designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mr. Yosef R.
My name is Yosef R. and I'm the owner of a house on Palos Verdes Circle since 1994. My house is by the turning point of Jack's Canyon Creek. In the 90s, the supervisor moved the big complex, and this caused, after it was built, in the next storm, to cut 35 feet in our yard. If you build such a hotel in the next storm, all our hours will be drafted into the canyon. I wonder if anybody was taking that into consideration to not take any decision before this investigation is over. The other thing about the view, because of the slope which Mr. did not shoulder, if you put that building above 16 feet, I will see instead of mountain from the house, I will see the hotel only. I will not see any mountain. Of course, the traffic in the Village of Oak Creek became horrible. When I bought the property, I could do in 15 minutes all the way from my house to Sedona. Today, it will be 45 minutes, and we don't tell, probably over an hour.
All right. Thank you for your concerns. And last up, we have Dr. Lisa Ferguson. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I am a resident of the Village of Oak Creek, and yesterday I submitted to you, Mr. Chairman, and via email and fax, a letter that I spent countless hours putting together, which was five pages long, citing all the legal challenges for why this rezoning should not be instated by this board. I noticed that one of the supervisors mentioned that we should be, you as a board should be taking into consideration the fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this. To me, that's irrelevant because they're just looking at planning and zoning, and you as a Board of Supervisors are responsible to the residents of the Village of Oak Creek and Sedona for doing what is in our best interest. And yes, you have to consider what the planning and zoning decided, but also realize that the Big Park Regional Coordinating Council voted unanimously to deny this rezoning request. So, I ask that you take this into serious consideration, and I brought copies of the letter that I wrote based on all the research citing all the reasons why this rezoning should not be permitted. Thank you.
That was already passed out to all the board members, so they have a chance to review it.
They already have it?
Before you got here. So, yes, we did get it, and we did distribute it to everybody, so they had an opportunity. But thank you very much for giving us another copy and being here today to speak.
Thank you.
So, that is the end of public. Okay, it looks like we have one more.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
She said that the Big Parts, you'd asked me to vote against this. My understanding was it was a six-to-three vote.
Let me make the record correct. The six-three vote was what the committee, the committee, the planning and zoning committee made recommendations to the council. The council was also a split vote. It was not unanimous. You're correct about that.
It was a split vote, right. Both were split votes. All right. Yes, sir. You'll have to fill out a form, but you're welcome to come up to the mic.
I'd be happy to.
Please, we have to be able to hear you. Good morning, sir. Or not morning anymore. Good afternoon.
Thank you for your service. I appreciate you taking your time. I know it's part of your job, and I know it's not easy either. Something that came up as the process went on is very important from my standpoint. The CCNRs here and the 207 seem to be related. As far as any concern you have about diminishment in value, I hate to break in, but for the record, we've got to have your name. Well, I'm sorry, Terrence Cook. As far as a diminishment in value concern and being sued, even though you can't really effectively do anything about the CCNRs, that certainly would come into play in any possible suit regarding diminishment in values. If they are contractually obligated with certain limitations, there's no apparent help that they're going to be able to hold forth in a suit that says their property was diminished in value. So, I would just want to emphasize what seems very apparent to me after more information came in, that you've got a lot of protection here, not the type of protection you might otherwise have. And another thing that was brought up by another gentleman was while you almost certainly are going to have to change the classification of this property, there are other classification headings that you can use. The gentleman, I think, mentioned a pad designation. He's a developer of the property across the street. So, if you ended up having to change it, I'm hopeful that there might be one that you could use that would be more efficient for the property than the one that is proposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. With that, any more questions? Yeah, we're going to have to fill out a form. Do we have one, Madam Clerk? I think there should be one right outside the door. Thank you very much. We have also, Mark Fuller was here to speak about the All-American Road and the Seaning Byway, but that wasn't really brought up as a concern amongst the comments that were made. So, unless you feel the need to get up and clarify that, I did pass forward to the rest of the board the rules and regulations that create and uphold the Seaning Byway, and so they have that information already, but if you'd like to speak to it, I'd be more happy to entertain you at the podium.
Since it's not part of the discussion, either pro or con, I didn't see any, don't see any reason to add to that. Be glad to answer any questions if any of the supervisors have concerns about the, or questions even about the All-American Road Committee and the Seaning Byway.
I don't seem to see any. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate you sitting through the meeting. With that, are there any more questions from the board members to either the applicant or community development as they're here before us?
Is there anything the applicant wants to say in regards to some of these comments?
I could just make a brief couple of comments. There's been a lot of discussion about legal processes, and I'm not going to dwell on the legal aspects of all of this, other than to say that at this point before the board, the considerations that you need to take into account are whether the request and the decision that you make today is, could be inadvisory and capricious, or whether it's in line with sound planning policy.
Hold on one second. We have another conversation going on. Could we please wait till after the applicant gets a chance to speak? Thank you.
We would just hope that you remember that the decision should be in line with what is happening in the properties surrounding here and holding a property to a standard that no other properties that have benefited from rezoning. Every person who spoke up here today has had the benefit of having their property rezoned at some time, whether or not they owned it when it happened. Whether or not they owned it when it happened, they now benefit from that. And so to hold this property to a different standard would seem somewhat unfair. Quick point of where the tax numbers quoted earlier weren't actually accurate and the client made she's been paying higher commercial taxes on the property. There are... She pays $10,000 a year in her taxes, so she's been paying taxes for 26 years on the property. So again, pointing to bring that to attention.
Thank you for your patience.
And also, I'm trying for not powerful, wealthy developers, they're small business owners, they're here today to ask for approvals to move forward with their proposed project that will be their family-run hotel. And then just a couple of points on the concepts that are brought up with different zoning districts. This is in an intermediate zoning district. There's C1, C2, C3. We're picking C2. In combination with the number of stipulations that we crafted were actually closer to the C1 district, we needed that C2 district to be able to have alcohol service in the hotel as part of the lounge. We went through with the use stipulation that we crafted where we eliminated a number of uses. That was based on a review of some of the uses in C2 that wouldn't have been allowed in C1, that were allowed in C2 that would have been impactful or had possible detrimental effects on the community. So we stipulated that those uses would not be done on this property. In terms of whether or not there should be a PAD or C2 and the concept of blanket zoning, there's not really anything called blanket zoning. We talked earlier about how holding zone was placed over the entire community, but C2 is a traditional zoning district. It's in your ordinance and it's there because of compiled properties. You've got development standards in place to enforce traditional zoning regulations. PADs in your ordinance are typically done for a larger master plan type community that might involve multiple different uses or owners. Here we've got one owner and one use, so PAD wasn't quite necessarily something that we went into. They also involve a lot of different dedications of open space. This is already part of a subdivision that has accounted for open space throughout the community. With respect to VOCA, we did work with them throughout this process. They've given different interpretations of the CCNRs over the years. It's another legal question that we wouldn't want to get into at this point, other than to say that there's a lot of questions about the CCNRs, but the bottom line is the use requested is business use and the zoning requested is a business zoning district.
I have a question in regards to the CCNRs. You know, we recognize the fact we have nothing to say about CCNRs. It's strictly a simple arrangement between parties. Okay, in this particular case, though, did the Patel's sign off and receive the CCNRs when they purchased the property originally? I guess it was 25 years ago or so.
Yeah, they did at that point.
They did. So they knew what those CCNRs stated at that point in time.
They did.
So we realize that regardless of our action, VOCA could take legal action in regards to those CCNRs.
They could. And we had worked with VOCA in the past and they had made various interpretations that are different than the ones that were presented to you today. The project hasn't technically come in front of them for formal approval or denial because as was stated correctly, it has to have zoning first. We can't ask them, the ARC committee or the board, so the ARC committee can't also make the formal final finding on this project until the zoning is in place. So they've given feedback.
Can't be sued for what you're thinking about doing.
What's that?
Can't be sued for what you're thinking about going to do.
Well, correct. And we also though can't ask them for approval based on different interpretations of the CCNRs at this point. We have to have the actual zoning in place because otherwise the interpretations can't be done because you have to be in compliance with current zoning. Just going back to the C2 and the PAD, the C2 with the stipulations affects the same impact as the PAD because if the project comes forward and isn't developed in a manner consistent with the stipulations that you approve with it right now, any project that doesn't match those has to come back before you. So it puts it back into the public hearing process again, but it allows your zoning district to give that property the flexibility that it needs in terms of different uses if for some reason the owners right now can't move a project forward.
Question? May I ask?
No.
And then the last point regarding the traffic, we understand there's a traffic problem really driven by the tourism that's coming to this area. A small hotel or a hotel on this site is not going to be a driver of traffic to this area. It's gonna be...
Please.
Traditionally, it's going to pull cars that are already coming to this community. It's gonna generate traffic that hasn't happened to this particular site, but the cars are coming to this area already. And I'll answer any additional questions that you have on, or I'll take my seat. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, I don't see any. Any other questions for community development? Anything you want to clarify?
I have one for Mr. Williams.
Vice Chair Brown.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams, what's the purpose of the Planning and Zoning Commission? What do they determine?
The Planning and Zoning Commission reviews all applications that come through the established, published planning process. They look at land use, whether that is an appropriate request. They do not look at CCNRs. They're looking at, is the project in compliance with Planning and Zoning Ordinance? Is it consistent with the community as far as the built environment? Does it adhere to the comprehensive plan within the county? And then they take public input as part of that to see if the plan should be altered or anything else to address those community concerns.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Williams? All right, we'll go ahead and call for a vote, or a motion at least. Well, Mr. Chair, I think with being it has to be super majority, I think each supervisor said.
Yeah, we'll call for the vote by roll, but we need a motion first.
All right, I need to go back to the Prop 207. Hold on. Excuse me, Chairman, members of the board, I hate to interrupt, but I just want to clarify, the agenda item as written doesn't specify that it would be subject to the stipulations 1 through 11, except item 5. So if someone does make a motion to approve, I would ask that they make the motion to approve subject to the specified stipulations.
Yes, and I agree with that, if I think, subject to the Planning and Zoning approved stipulations unless any other changes would be made.
I see that now. I'm forgetting that. I thought it was in the action requested section. Okay, I go back again. All the commercial area along that highway, 179, sets a precedence. Like it or not, it does. And in court law, they're gonna look at that because everything along that highway just about is commercial, residential, multi-use residential, RS zoning. We have, this property could be very easily turned into a gas station, convenience mart. It could be, like I said earlier, fries or one of them, grocery store of any sort, more retail shops. I would not want to see any of that because that is a lot more traffic as you saw. The, hold on now, what we said earlier, this is not an argument of back and forth, that'll go on forever. Sedona is a big problem. Sedona has become extremely popular. And this is the problem that's gonna be sitting in front of this board for quite a few subdivisions coming up also, big ones. The United States and the world has discovered Sedona. They went from a little over half a million visitors a year 10 years ago to over 3.5 million last year by their Chamber of Commerce stats. That is an insane amount of people coming into the Sedona area. On the flip side, you folks live there. The folks in Sedona live there. We already know we have this Airbnb problem. We're not, we don't have the neighbors that we used to have. Now it's on a daily basis. And this board, I'm gonna tell you, including Supervisor Garrison, we're working hard at the legislature to try to fix some of that. But that has really changed the face of the VOC and Sedona and other areas too. And you've got to remember too, a lot of this just past you is being created this traffic by Coconino County, what they have allowed and what's Sedona within the confines of that municipality. A lot of this is beyond our control. The traffic study has to work with ADOT, our Public Works Department, and the fire team. They're, they have a lot of hurdles. The flood control district, all these things are hurdles that they're gonna have to get through. Any one of them could kill it. I'm gonna tell you right now, they can't meet any of those. I was out there on the property multiple times, but I was again out there about two weeks ago, and I couldn't hear myself think between the Harleys, the dump trucks, and everybody going through there. It was awful. To think that someone should be forced to have a residence right there, I understand your point of view and I would absolutely be the way you are if I lived near there too. But it's a treasure in Arizona to live near there and to visit it. It's a treasure to go into Oak Creek Canyon. It's a national treasure. It's something that we should understand is that Americans and people throughout the world want to go see. It's not something we can close off. We have a slew of problems in that area because of the overcrowding of tourism. How are you gonna stop that? You can't. And it's gonna continue to grow more and more and more. And this board has certain, as you heard earlier, certain parameters that we can only talk about. Water being a huge one, we can't talk about. And so if meeting all the stipulations that they're gonna have to go through, it's gonna be tough for them to get this. I'm gonna tell you that right now. And I love to have conversations with everybody here and argue with what's going on, but I go back to what another supervisor said earlier, and I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for five years, chaired it for three. Unless new information has really came in to completely change what the commission looked at, this board does not have the right, in my opinion, to reverse their decision. They're the ones that vetted this for weeks, if not months, ahead of time also. So there's checks and balances through this thing. You still have a lot of possibilities to kill this, pass this board. And if you don't like what this board decision making does today, you are welcome to go up to the Supreme Court. That's your prerogative if you want to do that, and including on the CCNR. But right now, looking at this and what the bad side of this could be with the amount of traffic of a gas station or a retail shop or a grocery store, I think this is a good compromise, so I'll be voting yes. Chairman Garrison, can I make a clarification? We got other hands, I do. ...regarding the commercial corridor? No, we already talked about that and many people commented on the commercial corridor as well. It's not purely a commercial corridor, and I think that's what you're overlooking. Forty percent of the corridor... It's not a debate. You can debate that in court law, but it's not a debate here. It's multiple commercial all the way up and down that slot. Forty percent of those properties belong to the village of Oak Creek Association. Residential and commercial properties, I think you're overlooking that. Every single one of them since 1970 has conformed to the CCNRs of that association when they were developed. Here we are with a non-conforming use. And you have the right civilly to sue them. We never said that. Deal with that. We don't understand that. In the proper form, so. So I have a motion by Supervisor Thurman to... Chairman? Can you confirm that that motion occurred, please? It did.
You just said you'd be able to stipulate.
Yes, I said I would be able to make that. He's making a motion to approve being... I'll make the motion. The zoning change consideration... Okay, all right, then I'll change that to subject to the Planning and Zoning specified stipulations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Thurman to considering approve the zoning map change from RCU2A to C21 for the applicant's property with the conditions as stipulated by Planning and Zoning Commission and Community Development. Is that correct? Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
All right. I want to say that this is not an easy decision for anybody sitting up here. We all have, please, we've all had, we have our share of development in our individual districts. Unfortunately, it seems like the Verde Valley is bearing the brunt of this type of movement moving forward. But as Supervisor Thurman said, we have been discovered. We are gonna grow. We are going to change and unfortunately, that isn't necessarily in the best interest of those who currently live here and never has been. So you kind of have to look for the silver lining and what is brought to you and at the end of the day, the property is gonna develop. We want to try and make sure that the way it develops is in as much support of the community and their needs and wants and concerns as absolutely possible without restricting the opportunity of the owner in that same manner. So we've heard multiple items today on why this should be denied. I can tell you, I've heard almost those exact same arguments being made as a way for this to be moved forward and approved. Just because you're saying no doesn't mean everybody in your community is saying no. I've received plenty of feedback that is perfectly in favor of this proposition.
No, please.
Please, please listen. We're just, we're gonna be voting soon and then you can go outside and speak all you want, but we are gonna be making a vote. We do not take these decisions lightly. We are here to try to uphold your wishes as well as the rest of the community and the rest of the citizens in the Verde Valley and the county. So guarantee you, no matter what we say up here today, it's gonna make somebody mad and it's gonna make somebody happy. So it is not gonna make everybody mad. I guarantee you that. So without that being said, I will now call for a roll call vote. Have Supervisor Thurman?
That's for the next time. Maybe there'll be some new evidence.
Thank you for your comments. Supervisor Thurman?
Yes.
Supervisor Simmons?
Yes.
Supervisor Mallory?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brown?
Yes.
And my vote, and my vote will be a yes. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for attending today. We have the ability to move on to the session, but before that, I would like to take a break, so we'll head, we're gonna move to the back room and then we'll come back and move into the session, so we're gonna take a break.
One minute our office. They're safe.
Don't listen to the 99 people all the time.